And posted and first agenda item is the pledge of allegiance. Um, the flag is going to be wasted by our superintendent and I'll be attending to him, please. All right. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, United States of America.
And to the republic.
Republic stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. Liberty, justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Uh, agenda item number two is public comments. I don't see, I'm not, I'm not aware of any members of the public who are on board, who are on this to make comments. Um, so unless I'm incorrect in that, uh, Jim and you might be able to see better than I can unless I'm.
Okay, I'm not, unless, um, let me just see who. Just scanning one more time. I'm gonna unmute the Bennington banner to see if they have a comment.
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you, Tricia.
Thank you.
All right, so we're moving on to the, uh, our consent agenda. Uh, first of all, are there any recommended changes to the minutes from the March tenth meeting? Okay, so hearing done, the consent agenda is comprised of approval of the minutes from March and then four letters of resignation. Can I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
So, move.
That gets.
Okay, second, certainly very good. Any discussion on approving the consent agenda?
There are also warrants included. I think they've been posted and I will be circulating them via DocuSign for everybody to sign electronically.
Okay.
Thank you, Renee. Okay, so with that, uh, notification that we're gonna be receiving something else from Renee, uh, with the motion on the floor, all those in, in favor of approving the consent agenda as published, to signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, the consent agenda is passed. Uh, moving on to agenda item number four, finance. Uh, there was a treasure report posted, uh, and I would open up the floor for anyone to ask questions of either Director Gordon or Superintendent Colkey. All right, so hearing done. Uh, agenda item five with policies of which there were none, uh, so there's nothing to report there. Bringing us to agenda item number six, the superintendent's report.
Good evening and welcome to the first Zoom board meeting of the Southwest Vermont Union Elementary School District. And my first Zoom board meeting, though I certainly have become very familiar with, uh, Zoom meetings, uh, Microsoft Team meetings and Google Hangouts during the, the past month. I hope that the emails that I've been giving you, uh, have kept you updated with, um, what's been going on as we deal with the, the pandemic that, uh, the country is facing and Vermont is facing. I'm gonna give you further update on that in the second part of my report. First part I want to talk to you is about, um, letter A under the superintendent's report, the Bennington School Attendance Zones. As I've mentioned to you at some previous meetings, Monument Elementary School has, uh, is overrun with kindergarten applications. And one of the things that we've discussed is shifting the attendance zones, um, some, some streets out of the Monument Attendance Zone and into Bennington Elementary to try and balance that. The working group of administrators and a couple of board members, uh, agonized over that decision. And, um, you know, when we finished our work, I thought I was gonna be recommending to you tonight, everything from school choice to, and that's why Elaine was, Hewitt was first coming into the meeting, this is how recent this is. I am not recommending that we change the attendance zones. Um, we're going to develop a plan, to add a second kindergarten to Monument Elementary. Now, it will result in the loss of the media center at Monument Elementary School for next year. The media center will be converted into a classroom. I wanna commend, uh, Principal Donna Colley for working with me, uh, on this. And she is going, uh, probably simultaneously as I'm telling you this, she is letting her staff know, uh, so that no one is, um, is too surprised. We have a couple of things to try to, uh, rectify the, the issue of not having a media center. I'm still pursuing, uh, with, uh, the engineer for MSK Engineering, putting a portable classroom behind Monument Elementary School, which would then be the media center so that no students' class, no teacher's class went out, had to leave the building, go outside except for going to media. If not, uh, there are other options that we'll look at, um, you know. The school does not have an art room, they have art on a cart. A media center or a library on a cart is a little bit more difficult. Uh, the library is one of the largest rooms there. Uh, there could be a possibility of, um, merging grades as we see, uh, what numbers really are, um, and, put them in the bigger room or maybe put up a temporary wall in that room that divides up some space at least for book storage that then can be rotated out onto the carts. But, um, I think we have some really viable, uh, options so that at this time, we do not have to do, any rezoning of attendance for Monument. And so I, I, I take a sigh of relief in saying that.
Uh, Dick, go ahead, please.
Uh, Jim, does that, so the media center incorporates the library and whatever related item?
Yes, it does, yes.
Means that you're talking about splitting that room?
Uh, not splitting, but maybe a, just a, a section of it that would not really function as a media center that's, or library that students would go into, but it would be a book storage room for the carts on the book, uh, the books that are on carts. It, I, it's not big enough to make, in my opinion, to make two classrooms out of that.
And my, my other question would be, um, has the town fathers or, uh, the select board from Old Bennington been contacted about the potential for this or is?
So, that's what our engineer is working on. He is first meeting with the abutters of the project to make sure that, there is agreement on this before we would go to the, um, the board. Cause his advice was, uh, the engineer's advice was, let's do that. So he is handling that for, um, the school district. And, uh, my understanding, he's spoken to one of the abutters, has contacted the, the second abutter and, uh, is setting up a meeting for next week on that. And then if, um, we can reach agreement with the abutters, then we would go to, uh, the town or the, um, the village of Old Bennington, cause they have their own zoning board and ask for permission to put this here. The, the engineer feels that it can still happen by the start of the school year. But I did, when I spoke to Principal Donna Colley, I, I made it clear to her that we will do everything we can to put a portable classroom, but there is the reality that you may not open with, you may, you know, have to go to, uh, books on a cart. Or storage in the lobby, or we create a corner in the gymnasium or all, there's all kinds of options. And like I said, and there still is, as we see what real numbers are, there's a possibility of maybe contracting another grade further up, but we don't have all those numbers yet. But I think we have enough positive that we don't need to, in the middle of a pandemic, panic families even further by saying, we're now going to realign you to a different school.
Thank you. Go ahead, please. Scott, please, go ahead.
Uh, Jim, I just wanted to thank you and Principal Donna for the extra work there. It's, uh, thinking outside the box. And, you know, I know firsthand how much everybody's been agonizing over all this decision and, um, or that decision in particular. And definitely wanna extend a thank you to, to you both for, for thinking along those lines and not putting families through any more than they're already going through.
And, and I wanna again thank, uh, Donna Colley and her staff because, yeah, it's so much easier for the superintendent when you get cooperation on an idea where opposed that like I have to dictate and say, this is what's gonna happen. Uh, the principal is committed to keeping those families in her school and I thank her for that, so. Okay, any questions on that? And I'll keep you updated as we go through the process of putting a portable classroom in there.
Jim, am I correct in saying that we don't, the board does not need to take action about that because we're not, we're not changing anything other than the physical location of the media center?
Right, correct. Yep, just like, you know, the board took no action. They used, uh, you know, there's two first grades this year. Uh, before that, one of those first grade classrooms was an art room. We, I should point this out, why this, um, is a good alternative for now. We don't know what the future's gonna hold. We don't know what the, the trending numbers look like. It doesn't, it does look like this is a bump going through and it's not gonna continue, but we can never be sure of that. But a year from now, we have the option of not just aligning attendance zones in, uh, the Bennington School District, but we could all, we could really look at how we want to alter, uh, attendance zones throughout the, the Union Elementary District. And, you know, by that means like maybe there's some students closer to Powell that may go to Powell or close to Shasbury or close to Woodford that, uh, could ease overcrowding somewhere else or balance it out. So we have time to, to look at that with this option. I.
Let me, let me just interrupt for a second. Chela got bounced out. She's hoping you can let her back into the meeting.
I see her. I'm admitting her back in right now. Thank you for, and let's see. She's coming up. I don't have, I gotta unmute her in a minute. I think she might've got bounced out again.
I see her there. I see her there.
She's here.
Yep.
Yep, there she is. Okay. You back, Chela?
Can you hear us all right, Chela?
Something's going on. Cause every time I try to unmute her, it won't let me. Are you muting yourself, Chela? Cause I'm trying to unmute you. She'd still be able to hear us, though. Yeah. And I know you're seeing her on, but she keep, oh, there she is again. Okay, it says that she's here and unmuted. Chela?
She may have herself muted.
Right, okay. Um, earlier this morning, I, um, emailed you or, I think it was this morning, the continuity of learning plan, um, that went to the, the Vermont Agency of Education by the deadline on, uh, April eighth. We received it a few days later with them asking for more detail on one section of the continuity of learning plan, which was how we were going to address, um, the continuity of learning with students that have little or no internet access. So we, we wrote that part, submitted it, um, last, uh, Thursday morning, and we heard back from them on Friday that, uh, the plan as written was approved. And, uh, they commended, um, the supervisory union for its, uh, work particularly on, um, the distribution of, um, devices that, um, you know, Chromebooks that, to students to try and get, get that access. And you, you can read the plan. I apologize for its length. It's forty-two pages long. Uh, we will be putting that on our website and, uh, consider it a public document. Uh, I know the Bennington banner is, had requested a copy and we will give them that, but I wanted the board to be able to see that first. I know you just got that today, so I don't know if you have any questions on that or you want more time to review the forty-two pages.
I would like some additional time to review the forty-two pages.
Okay, good. So, the other thing that I wanna talk about, I, I, I have so many people to thank that when I, I do that, uh, I always worry about who I forget, but I do, there, there are really some, you know, key, key people on the continuity of learning plan. Um, that would include, um, our Director of, um, Curriculum Instruction, Melissa Sankel, uh, and Laura Boudreaux, the Assistant Superintendent, who chaired that team that had Frank Barnes and, um, Wendy Foran and, um, Kate Abbott, a huge player there for us, and, um, Megan, um, whose last name I'm now forgetting. I knew I shouldn't have started down this road. Who was this? Thank you, Renee Mesket, who is the, uh, Associate Director for Early Childhood Education. So they're, they're, um, they'll work on, on that important document. And the other voice that you just heard is a person I can't thank enough, uh, Renee Gordon, um, for her work, particularly around, uh, working with Do Four and the Abbey Group to get food services, uh, you know, what was today's meal count, Renee? Do you know?
I do, I, I don't know.
But the last number we had was.
Oh, she's, they've done over thirty thousand meals since we started a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah. And you should know that on Fridays, you know, it's a big lift day. They're sending a lot out on Friday, cause we're sending, uh, weekend meals out too. We also have some volunteers who are working on, uh, you know, our, our educators who are volunteering on those buses to help distribute, um, food. Because, you know, the, my concern is, um, the, the sustainability of this, uh, people get tired. Um, you know, the Do Four drivers and, um, the Abbey Group who have been really, um, pushing through this. So, my word to all them is to try and rest their staff and that my understanding is that, you know, they're rotating as much as possible. But, um, you know, we, we will continue to monitor that, cause it's, it's, uh, I find, I, I think that's critical. And then the other, I can't, go ahead.
I, I would just, uh, throw out there that I'd love to volunteer to help. And if there was a schedule put together where I could do that, you know, for one or two days, whenever, one of, you know, a day a week or whatever it is, a day every couple of weeks, whatever's needed to, to help.
The volunteer schedule's being handled through our HR department and right now we're only doing internal because, okay, we don't know where, like you've been, who you've been exposed to and all that, so we're kinda going that guideline right now.
I've attended people meetings.
You're right. We've had other people want, from the community who wanna volunteer too. And we also said, you know, we're going by the, i- if we don't have a background check on you, then we're, we're also, we, we can't have you volunteer right now too, so. I, I just wanna.
Can you please let Chela in again?
Hey, Jim, I just wanted to, uh,
Go ahead, Tony.
Just add, add on to what you guys were saying as far as, and, and this is not only speaking from a board member, but also speaking from a parent. I think it was, uh, I think it's been an absolute amazing job done by everybody from start to fin, start to where we are now as far as keeping these kids involved in, I mean, this is all new for everybody. And I just think, I, I'm amazed at what I've seen through this transition into the remote learning. And, and I just wanna echo my thoughts and thanks to everybody involved, teachers, paras, the administrative staff, everybody. Because I just, I'm amazed that I, I hear from other states and they're not so lucky as we are. So, I, I'm just.
Other districts within the state.
Yeah, well, I haven't heard that. I've heard from other states, but, but it's just phenomenal. And I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Let me, thank you. Let me talk about our tech department in, in the work that they've been doing. I mean, over twelve hundred Chromebooks have been distributed and they, and as of yesterday, they were still trying to get out another two hundred to those, you know, the, the last two hundred that we can't get a hold of. And they did that with, um, help from our school nurses who worked with them on the distribution at, at the, at the high school. We, we have concentrated food distribution at the middle school and then technology distribution at the high school so that we limit use of buildings and we can control, we, we know where we need to clean and things like that. So the, the, the work that they have done to get those ready to go out and they've had some that have already come back. And then they, you need, the other ones, that, that's just incredible. But, but in addition, that we have those two hotlines that are being manned by the tech department. One for parents and students to call into that may need technical support on their device. And then the other that is for staff. So tho- those, those who are staffed, uh, um, all week long and they're getting a lot of phone calls. One, one thing that we have to tweak a little bit is like what I learned today is some of the phone calls we're getting is not necessarily, um, technical of nature. And we're gonna have to refer them back to the principal. It's just, they know that they call that number, they're gonna get a, they're gonna get a live person there as opposed to some of these voicemails. So, uh, well, you know, as, as I said in my email to you people tonight, this is all about remaining flexible. And, you know, we're not gonna get everything perfect the first time around, though I think for our first Zoom meeting, this is going pretty good. But we will, we'll continue and like sometimes when I'm talking to the administrators, they get a little down, like, you know, um, Frank Barnes was really down when he still had two hundred Chromebooks to distribute. And I said, let's concentrate on the fact that you distributed twelve hundred Chromebooks. Or, you know, I know that, um, you know, the, the Do Four and, and, um, the Abbey Group would, would love to, uh, you know, probably even feed more people, you know, there's questions about, you know, could we help out with adults and all that? So let's, let's, we wouldn't get reimbursed for that, but let's concentrate on the great job that you're already doing. And let's, let's focus on the accomplishments and we will get to more if we can, so. You know, the, I thought it was important that we have, um, school vacation and, uh, which seems at first glance, somebody was like, why do you need school vacation? Yeah, I haven't been in work. Um, I think families needed a break from trying to do distance learning. The teachers needed a restart, cause we had, remember the two terms that we should be familiar with. What happened from the governor's order until school vacation week was known as the continuity of education. And we were not introducing any new topics at that point. And that really had to do about access, particularly for special education students. We had to have plans in place that, you know, you've heard us refer to FERC before, Free and Appropriate Public Education, to make sure that we could accommodate our students. So as long as we weren't introducing, um, and this was following guidance from the state. As long as we weren't introducing new topics, then we weren't violating any other students' IEP as we moved forward. So we came back from vacation and yesterday was the start of what the state of Vermont calls the continuity of learning. And then that is moving forward with, with new topics. Now, it, it's not gonna be education like, like we've ever seen. And I'm not naive to think that, um, we're not reaching everybody. And I know that, you know, we've gotten some emails, the principal's gotten some emails, I've gotten some emails from parents who are frustrated, um, with remote learning. They applaud the efforts, but want us to hear what a struggle it is. And when, you know, you hear some of the, the examples of why it is, things that we, we have one image of what it looks like in our head and then you have somebody explain to me, you know, I have three kids at home and I'm working from home. And I have three kids who, once at the high school, he's a law guy, this high school teacher, and I got one in the elementary school and they gotta, they gotta log in and my bandwidth is getting squeezed. And so, just take a breath and we'll, we're gonna, I, I acknowledge that it's not a perfect system, but we're not gonna give up on it either.
Scott, go ahead, please.
If I may, the one thing I'll add, and this was, this was awesome, um, both with, as a parent, uh, with Jeff Johnson and, um, Ms. Clark at Shasbury was, we had asked if perhaps there could be a parents Zoom meeting for us to learn what, you know, I, I consider myself pretty tech savvy and I've been living on WebEx for the last five weeks. Um, but Google Classroom, Google Documents, submitting, uh, documents, understanding all of that and the process that goes into it was, um, it was hard for me to get my head around. So a, a parents Zoom meeting, I mean, that was the best third, forty minutes we could have spent a Sunday night with Ms. Clark under, teaching us how to handle it. Um, and, you know, I don't know whether it's a wider audience. I'm sure other teachers are doing it, but, um, from my perspective, having that was, was fantastic. So I just wanted to throw that out there. A, as a thank you to Jeff and, uh, Ms. Clark for doing it. But B, as a, as a possible idea for anybody watching this to ask.
I will, um, there are a lot of resources for parents on our websites and, and how-to videos and which, you know, the tech department has been working to put there. So, but I, I know when we refer people to our website, it sometimes annoys the people too. So they want what, what Scott is saying, so I, I've made a note. Um, they want that, here's a meeting with really a basic how-to as opposed to referring you to like, go to our website and watch this video on, you know, how-to, whatever. So, um, I, I hear that note. And, and as I, as I go down the thank you list, you know, you know, you mentioned Jeff, uh, all the principals. Vice principal's been just phenomenal considering, you know, if someone told us that, hey, we want you to prepare systems for remote learning. We want it to become a remote learning school district. And, okay, it'll take about three years to do that. Oh, no, you got three weeks to do it. You're gonna become a remote learning platform in three weeks. So, uh, you know, colleges, I hear, well, colleges do remote learning. Yeah, they were doing it before the pandemic and most of their students all had, you know, it's a requirement for college to have a laptop. So it's, it's a whole different situation. Uh, so our principals, they, they've been adapting tremendously. And then finally to, you know, our teachers, um, we're asking them to do something they've never been prepared to do. That they, um, you know, shifting, shifting gears for, for what they are performing. And, uh, we certainly couldn't do it without them. And I, I thank them for their cooperation and their desire to, um, to continue learning. I, I, I'm sure they miss their students. It's, I mean, they miss that connection. But that's really what we are emphasizing with principals and teachers that, um, you know, the content may suffer a little, but we, we want that social emotional check-in with our students as often as possible so that they have that connection between the, the student and, um, their teacher. That, that's, that, that is critical. I wanna talk about HR too. Um, they have been doing some stellar work, you know, the, the questions from staff, um, from staff members who need leave of absences or worried about pay or benefits and doing it all remotely. And not, you know, I'm not just talking about our directors. I'm talking about their staff, like the HR staff who had to learn how you're gonna do payroll from, from home. And, um, so central office is open every day from eight to one. There is an administrator and, um, a staff member minimum in the building every day. We rotate it. So no one has to be there that often. And that's allowed to go in, because certain things, um, have to be printed in our building, like particularly a payroll check. So, um, and the tech staff is, is in the building also. And, and I know Renee's in on this meeting. Her, it challenges for her staff. Think, you know, they're used to, um, the financial people are pretty rigid when it comes to how they do their job and the standards that they, that they operate under. And now we're saying like, no, you, you can't do that. You're gonna have to learn how to do it remotely. One of the things that I pushed for is, and you heard it mentioned tonight, is DocuSign. So before we went into this, we did not have the ability to sign documents, um, remotely. But I don't know if anyone's ever done any work with a lawyer in the past few years, you'll know that that's what they've all been using is DocuSign. So we have switched to that. And, um, who knows, when we come out of this, we may be doing a lot of things differently, smarter, more efficiently. Maybe reducing some paperwork, cause our goal with our stu, with our teachers and students and with our administrators in central offices to reduce the amount of paper that's going back and forth to people. Because we do have paper handling procedures in place where every time mail comes in, we isolate it uh, in the central office conference room by, by school for twenty-four hours and by the date it came in. And it's, it isn't touched until it's sat there. So anytime we can reduce the papers going back and forth, we can speed the process up. I'll be quiet for a minute and ask, answer any questions you may have.
Dick, go ahead, please. Um, so far, everybody's getting paid, but does that include, uh, how the contracts work? I realize it's so premature, but.
Yeah. So, uh, everyone following the governor's orders, everyone is continuing to get, to get paid. And the, uh, I did leave out a group, our support staff, paraeducators. Um, there's, there's guidance on what, you know, we've been doing with them, a lot of professional learning, some of the paras are volunteering in childcare centers, some are on the buses with us. And, uh, you know, we're, our goal is. Childcare centers, some are on the buses with us and uh you know, we're, our goal is to make sure that everyone has a meaningful task to do. Um and that may be professional learning. I think we're gonna come out of here with that some. Uh highly qualified para educators because of the professional learning they're doing while we're uh. In this remote environment, so contracts for um renewal of um teachers were. Or we we already had passed that deadline before we um went into um. Remote learning, so that's there.
Uh actually, uh I'm sorry, Jim, uh actually, I was thinking of things like uh speech pathologists, the psychologists, those kind of. Are they so.
Yes, yep, yep, but we're, we are gonna be looking at everything going forward. I don't wanna, you know, panic anybody who may be listening, but. Um you know, you've heard the predictions, our our concern for um next school year. The twenty twenty one budget, one of the things that we're hearing is whatever funds we may receive from. The federal government under the CARES Act will be clawed back, is the term that they use, from the state. Uh because the Ed Fund is not being replenished as it's paying out all this money. Um and the impact on the tax rate uh could just be unsustainable, so. Uh we're we're gonna have to make some difficult decisions. I am not prepared to mention them tonight. Um but I will, you know, we have some deadlines coming up in the contracts that we have to adhere by and. We are looking at open positions, there's, uh the director of H R gave me a list of all, I asked him to generate, where's all the open positions? Um are we going to fill them all? What's the critical need? Um and and the principal's aware of this and they're gonna have to be able to defend every position. I put a a spending freeze actually even before we went out um to remote. Uh learning, uh went to the stay in place or stay at home, when I put a a a freeze on spending. Um other than essential and emergency uh supplies, so anything that needs to support remote learning was approved. But um you know, I'll give you an example, I think the principal at Woodford wanted uh the fences slated to be pa- painted and I said, no. We, I don't consider that essential or emergency work at this point. Going forward, we will we'll see what we can afford. We should know how Vermont uh funding works, anything we save out of this budget will not be able to apply to next year's budget. It's the following year, twenty twenty two uh fiscal year, which the state is telling us. Could be even more impacted by this than the twenty twenty one budget. I think the twenty twenty one budget is still gonna be impacted, so we're in planning stage and um. By your May meeting, we definitely will have some recommendations for where we're going to need to make some. Um reductions in spending.
Any other questions for our superintendent?
I I mean, I kept getting knocked off because I was using my stupid laptop, which obviously it doesn't work, so now I'm on my daughter's Chromebook. So.
That's a lot, by the way, because that was a question we had from parents, uh can they use the Chromebook? If they need to and yet we're trying to give everybody access, so yes.
Yeah, um y- yeah, no, but it's it's her uh her private Chromebook.
So not not a school issue.
It's not a school issue, it's Chromebook, no, it's her Chromebook, um so um. And I'm not on her school account, I'm on her private, so. Um so I just wanted to, I know I got knocked off a couple of times, but I just wanted to kinda um. Echo what everybody was saying about, you know, being super impressed with how everything was handled. The one thing that I really feel was has been extremely impressive is the communication, not only by. Um central office, you know, constantly keeping us updated, but um. But the middle school has been exceptional in their communications. Um and then not only that, but the the. I've been super impressed with Molly Stark and the way they've um communicated, jumped on everything, has got everything set up. Um and then I was struggling a little bit teaching qu- Common Core math, not gonna lie. And I had amazing support from um my daughter's teacher to help me through that. Because I was struggling, um so um I ju- I just, I just wanted to make sure I. Got a chance to say how impressed I've been with Molly Stark and the middle schools.
I'm fortunate to be able to work with some great people who have really, you know, this is, in a situation like this, this is where you. You find who your all stars are and it. It's been a pleasure to work with the people that I get to work with and um I can't thank them enough and I apologize if I left anybody out. I I am, you know, worried about a few things, what Dick mentioned absolutely, what what. The economic crisis that's coming, I mean, right now we're dealing with the immediate learning problem, but we all know that there's some, you know. Some crisis financially coming. We do not have signed teacher contracts, we do not have. So signed support staff contracts, we were heading towards fact finding with the teachers, that's certainly gonna be impacted by this. Um and I'm worried about who we're not reaching, I mean, I I I can tell you that I tell the administrators we focus. On the positive and who we are reaching, but I'm also, I I wouldn't be an educator if I wasn't concerned about who's falling through the cracks and who. We may lose, we have plans in place with the principals through our attendance policy, we have a modified attendance policy. And uh we will be, you know, if we don't hear from families. Uh after many attempts, either the principal guidance, depending on each school situation, because there are different staffing levels. Um then we will uh we've authorized the principals to use the SROs um. To make family contacts to see uh, because our our concern would be, are they okay? Are they still even in the area if we haven't heard from them? Um but actually, for the, you know, when I met with the principals today. The numbers are gonna sound daunting, but not really, for the elementary, like. Monument reported today that they only didn't hear contact from thirteen students, thirteen families. Uh panel, six, Bennington Elementary, thirty four, but that's out of, you know, two hundred and seventy. Uh Woodford, only one, and Shaftesbury, thirteen. So I think this was yesterday's numbers for the first day of remote learn- learning, I think that's outstanding, but we will. Continue tomorrow that as the week goes on, see if it's the same people, see and then find out if, you know, if. And then we're at the end of the week and there's somebody that we have still yet to hear from, then we'll. Try other avenues to make sure that we get a connection and make sure that they're okay.
What about Molly Stark with four hundred students or three hundred?
Did I say wrong? Um sixty eight. Which on a, I I, you know, it sounds high, but on their average day, they're thirty five to forty students absent, so. Sixty eight on the first day of remote learning with four hundred students in that school, I still think that's pretty good.
Yep, top of the tally.
Anything else for our superintendent? Okay, well, that just brings us to uh the chair report and people have already said much of what I was gonna say anyway, I just, I've just. So impressed at 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 the stability of leadership uh during this. Dedication and imagination and poise and flexibility that everybody has has shown in this. Tony used the phrase from start to finish and and I absolutely agree with that, and people at every. At every stage of of the school system is responding with such um such vision and such uh. Enthusiasm in moving forward and solving these problems that are coming up and solving them and solving them and solving them. Um if there's any sort of panic, you are all keeping it very well hidden because it just seems to be moving so smoothly. Um from both central office and from the from the schools themselves, and so just would would echo everyone's. Words of of thanks and appreciation for all your all your hard work now and moving forward, for sure. Uh and and frankly, Jim, your idea that came up yesterday of. How we can save the Monument School District from having to re- rezone itself just shows that 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 flexibility and that vision and that. Creativity doesn't stop with the remote learning, it continues in dealing with all of our problems that are coming up, so. I just think we're very fortunate as a board uh to have had the response that we've had from central office and from the schools, so thanks again.
Thank you, I'll make sure that if they're not watching, I will share those comments with all my administrators, we we do um. It just to give you my schedule a little, I mean, i- it's changing as now that we're venting remote learning, but I do a. An eight o'clock meeting with all the regional superintendents on Zoom, a nine o'clock meeting with the assistant superintendent. A nine thirty meeting with the directors and the principals used to be at ten thirty, but now with remote learning, we bumped them back to one o'clock remote. Meeting so that they're done what their duties are in the school, but this week, we're. Ratcheting back that we don't meet every day, we, it's it's just too much screen time. Um and um so it's three days a week with the directors, assistant superintendent and I meet every day. Three days a week with the directors, two days a week with principals and once we're even more comfortable, we, you know, because when we're operating normally, I don't. Actually meet with the principals every week, it's every two weeks, but I mean, that's just the the scheduled meetings, there's all. Kinds of smaller Zoom meetings just with, you know, a smaller group, like maybe two principals that have an issue, certainly phone calls and um. So it's it's, but I am hearing screen fatigue from teachers. Uh principals and and we're trying to address that, trying to implement, so what we do do is uh. I put out a a Google sheet um before every principal's meeting. And I share it with all the principals and all the directors and the principals can go on to the Google sheet. And list their questions and concerns, so it makes the meeting expedited because then it's shared with the directors, so if that question is. More like finance related, Renee can go on to that, on to that sheet and put an answer prior to the meeting. Um and so it it and now we have um. Uh a library, we've had six um principal director newsletters as of today. And plus some specialized one just on the content and learning plan, but the general ones are six and we're gonna continue to do that. But then it creates an archive that a a principal or director can go back and and see um what the question was and what's the answer and maybe. Can save time that, you know, ask the same question twice.
Yes, Cindy. I just wanna tell uh Jim and his staff, thank you, uh Jim, I appreciate. I appreciate daily updates, everything, every time you have a minute to give us an update, I appreciate it, I look forward to it. And I too wanna say thank you to your administration and everyone else and just be safe, we're all in this together.
I'm glad you uh you say that because sometimes I worry, alright, I'm sending you, because here's another email from the superintendent, just like. We're also trying to not overload the K twelve alerts to parents, since it's critical that we give this information, but I don't want. It to happen and this is what I keep saying to the directors, let's, you have to consolidate how often we do that. So that parents don't get fatigued from and then start tuning out the messages, so we're gonna, is the supervisory union again with another message, but. I think more is better right now.
Yeah, yes, I agree. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your support, it it means a lot as we uh work through something that I've. Never thought I'd be going through.
None of us.
Well, our final agenda item is just the FYI, which includes the budget status report, which was posted. Um so I see Renee Gordon raising her hand, so Director Gordon, the form of yours.
That's how she is at the directors' meetings too, just when we think we're done.
Um I just wanted to let you know that I I think I successfully sent the um DocuSign out to everybody, Chila has already signed it. And Tony has already signed it, if you don't have it, please reach out to me and um we'll go from there, thank you.
Thank you. Uh so we've exhausted our agenda, so I would entertain a motion to close, please.
So move.
I don't know what Scott's doing.
I sent it to your S V S U email, does that automatically forward to another email address?
No.
No. I didn't, I didn't get it.
I didn't even know I had an S V S U email. If I'm honest.
We'll work, we'll work on that because we can do a a forwarding to your.
Yeah, they link it to your to your, like, it's linked to my email, so I get it no matter what.
Okay, yeah, I I haven't, I haven't received it, so.
Renee, I have his email address, I can give it to you. Okay.
Me and Chila are just overachievers, that's all.
Well, I'm impressed that you were on the meeting and DocuSign at the same time.
Wow, you know.
Very efficient.
I have multiple screens going on, making air, I have this war were going on in my bedroom.
Great, uh so if there's nothing else, uh I would have that motion to adjourn, please.
So so be it.
Thanks, Cindy, can I have a second, please?
Second.
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 Could I have any discussion about adjourning? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjourning can signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes, so thank you very much, everyone, thank you uh to Jim and to Frank and everyone else for having this set up. Uh Director Gordon, thanks for your inputs and uh yeah, take care, everyone.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.